This is the November 16th regular meeting of the Montgomery Independent School District Board of Trustees. I'd like to call this meeting to order, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. All right. All right, Dr. Morrison, are there any special recognitions or presentations?
There are two different special recognitions. I'm going to ask Justin Moreno, our Executive Director of Communications, celebrating his one-year anniversary with us today.
Yay!
It's a celebration of itself. Justin has been doing amazing marketing communications.
It's gone by really fast.
But, Justin, who are we recognizing first?
This Friday is National Substitute Educator Appreciation Day, and obviously, great substitute educators are a necessity for us to be a successful school district, especially through the challenges of this past year and a half. We'd like to take this opportunity to recognize Carol Rising. Carol, come on up. So Carol, I know she doesn't like to spotlight, but she's going to stand right here. She's worked to train and coordinate substitutes in Montgomery ISD since 1996 and manages just under 300 substitutes in the sub pool. Carol says that she truly loves her job, and when we spoke to her about recognizing her work, she immediately said we needed to recognize the subs, not her. So with that, we have a wonderful group of substitute educators. We ran our top 10 list of most utilized subs this year, and so I'll go ahead and call them by name, and if you would come up, please. We have Carol Barr. Michelle Barham.
When you come up, can you come up to the diasthenist, stay with us, we're going to take a picture at the end.
Wayne Palmer. And Andy Stouts. And if we can get a picture with the board.
You guys just scoot this way so you can center your crew. Five, six, that's perfect, right there. Yep. Can you scoot in just a little? Thank you. One, two, three. There we go.
Justin, before we move on, just two quick words I'd like to say to our substitute teachers. A lot of times, people hear substitute, and that's what they focus on, but having been in these individual classrooms where they're in for us, they are teachers. And when you have the quality of subs that we have in Montgomery ISD, you don't see the drop in terms of the actual education that happens, and we don't take that lightly. We're very, very blessed to have some amazing substitutes. They are incredibly professional, they care, they're a vibrant part of our district, and let me tell you how much we always appreciate them. But this year, at the start of the year, when every district around this region was struggling to find substitutes, and there were school districts that were reporting a 50% sub fill, we didn't experience anything like that, just because we're very, very blessed to have who we get to work with, so we thank you so much. And Carol is some kind of awesome sauce. She takes it personally, any substitute fill that does not happen. She just, every day, she brings her A-game. There is nothing that brings her more joy than making every substitute request filled, and there's nothing that gives her more pain and angst when there's one request that isn't, and she's just an extraordinary servant leader in our school district, so let's give her another round of applause. So as we transition, you know, the great thing about, by the way, one other thing, too, if there's one, all of our board members appreciate the quality of our substitutes, but I know Linda Portman, who spends quite a bit of time subbing in another school district because she can't submit our...
And make the top 10.
Yeah, well, you wouldn't be qualified to be a sub in here, but you make the top 10 of board members, and we only have seven.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
How about that? So in education, we get to change lives, we get to enhance lives when we do what we need to do. Very rarely are we ever part of saving a life. And what I'm really, really excited about is to be able to bring forward some individuals who performed some very special feats at a critical time, and just can't wait to introduce these individuals to you, and a young man that we are sure glad we're being able to call him forward today. So, Justin.
We have this evening, Michael and Ms. Rodriguez, would you come up, please? So, Michael Rodriguez, he's one of our amazing students here at MHS. On October 7th this year, Michael had a little bit of a health scare, right? During choir practice routine day, or band practice, I'm sorry, band practice, routine day, just like any normal day, Michael had a health scare where he had collapsed, and like Montgomery always does, we rallied, and there were a group of wonderful individuals that responded right away to save Michael's life, so we wanted to call them up. We have many of them here tonight. First is our head trainer at Montgomery High School, Ms. Megan Rubel. If you could come up, Megan. We also have some first responders, Reed Edelman. Mr. Kane Poole, I don't know if he's here tonight, but he was also. And Albert Chambers. And with Michael tonight is his mother, Ms. Sonia Rodriguez. Let me do another picture with the board, please.
Everybody, there you go. Perfect, thank you. All right. One, two, three.
And Ms. Rodriguez, I do need to apologize to you. When Ms. Moreno called you to ask if it would be okay if we could honor your son, I know we gave you a little bit of fright, I think the words, "Oh, my gosh, is he okay?" We are so glad that you're here tonight with Michael, and thank you for letting us do this tonight. Appreciate you so much.
All right, we do have one other special recognition. The board is wearing purple, sorry. Sorry. Purple in honor, and a lot of our administration is wearing purple in honor of the Montgomery Bears High School undefeated team, so let's go Bears, you know, keep it up. And thank you all for that recognition. Are there any public comments? There are none, so we will move now to the consent agenda. Does any board member wish to pull an item off of the consent agenda? All right, no one does, so is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll move to consent agenda as presented.
All right, Ms. Kirby, in a second.
A second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Posed and abstained. All right, next, we have the public hearing for the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. First, Mr. Lynn.
This is our annual report that's required by state law. FIRST stands for the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. Bear with us while we pull up this presentation for you this evening. So this report is the 2021 Schools First Report, but it is actually based on data from the 2019-2020 fiscal year, so it's actually a year behind. Schools First was created by the state legislature in response to one of the Senate bills. I believe this is the 19th year for Schools First. And so the purpose of the meeting tonight is to do a couple of things. One, we need to share with you this year's report and go through the indicators, and I apologize for the content of the material, it's not exciting at all, but it is something that we're legally required to do. As I said, this is the 19th year of Schools First, developed by TEA as a response to Senate Bill 875 of the Texas Legislature. The goal is to achieve quality performance in the management of school districts' financial resources, and there's four ratings that a district can receive. A, superior achievement, all the way through F, substandard achievement. As I said, this is based on 2019-20, student, staff, budget, and actual financial data. There are 20 performance indicators, and so I'm going to run through all 20 of those real briefly this evening. They're a combination of pass/fail, and then also some are scored on a scale of 0 to 10. In the report, you will notice that MISD actually scored a 92, which, based on the previous chart, would have meant a superior achievement. However, for this year, our rating is actually a C meets standard achievement, and that is due to question number 17. Last year, remember when we were standing before you a year ago this evening? The auditors provided some findings of weak internal controls as we walked into the district and inherited some of those issues, so that's what brought our rating down from what would have been an A to a C. So, as I said, I'm going to fly through these indicators real quick. Number one is either a pass/fail. Was the annual report turned in in a timely manner? And yes, our report was turned in within the time dedicated by TEA. Was there an unmodified opinion in the annual financial report? And once again, this is a pass/fail, and we did pass. Was the school district in compliance with the payment terms of all debt agreements at fiscal year-end? Once again, another pass/fail, and yes, we passed. Did the school district make timely payments to TRS, workers' comp, Internal Revenue Service, and other governmental agencies? And yes, we passed. Was the average change in assigned and unassigned fund balance over three years less than a 25% decrease? And once again, we passed that indicator. Here, we start to get into some of the scoring. Was the number of days of cash on hand in current investments in the general fund for the school district sufficient to cover operating expenditures? We received the maximum 10 points for this because our cash on hand in days was 131 days. Was the measure of current assets to current liabilities sufficient to cover short-term debt? We got four points out of possible 10 because our current asset-to-liability ratio was 1.78. Did the school district's general fund revenues equal or exceed expenditures? If not, was the number of days of cash on hand greater than 60? Once again, we got the full 10 points because our days of cash on hand was 131, which was more than 60. Did the school district average less than a 10% variance when comparing budgeted revenues to actual revenues? And we received the full 10 points for that because our variance was less than 10%. Was the ratio of long-term liabilities to total assets for the school district sufficient to support long-term solvency? And we got the maximum 10 points there. Was the debt per hundred of assessed property value ratio sufficient to support future debt repayments? We got eight out of 10 points for that indicator. Was the school district's administrative cost ratio equal to or less than the threshold ratio? We got a full 10 points because our administrative cost ratio was less than 10%. Did the school district not have a 15% decline in the students-to-staff ratio over three years? We got the full 10 points because there was not a decline of student enrollment. Was the school district's ADA within the allotted range of the district's biennial pupil projections? We received five points for that because we fell within the range. Did the comparison of PIMS data to like information in the school district's annual financial report result in a total variance of less than 3% of all expenditures by function? Once again, we passed because our variance was less than 3%. Did the external independent auditor indicate the annual financial report was free of any instances of material weaknesses in internal controls? This is the one that we failed and resulted in the highest rating that we could get, being a 79. Number 18, did the external independent auditor indicate the annual report was free of any instances of material noncompliance for grants, contracts, or laws related to local, state, or federal funds? And we received the maximum 10 points. It was free from any instances of material noncompliance. Did the school district post the required financial information on its website? And we received the maximum points of five, which was yes, we did post all of our required information. Last one, did the school board members discuss the district's property values at a board meeting within 120 days before the district adopted its budget? And we passed that indicator. So, once again, that's just a really quick overview, and I apologize that I had to go through all 20 indicators, but that's what I'm required to do. There is a packet of this information located at the back of the room for people in attendance can pick one up. It will also be posted on our website, on Justin's favorite page, which is the transparency page on our home, MISD website. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Go ahead, Ms. Hopkins.
Just going back to the deficiency that we did, that's been rectified, and we are moving forward with solutions, right?
Yes, there were two internal control weaknesses. As I said, both of them were identified as we walked in as new administrators to this district. One of them was related to the accounting related to a bond refunding transaction that occurred in January of 2020 before our arrival into this district. The other one was around CTE allocations and expenditures. This year's audit report will tell you that both of those findings have been addressed and corrected and are no longer issues. So those are very good things that we are happy to report. We were able to correct from last year's audit.
So, Mr. Lynn, if we're expecting that a future audit will show that we should be back up to where our 92 points gives us the A, correct?
We are hopeful. That is always our goal. As this board understands, we have walked into a situation where we need to do some cleanup, and so we are continuing on that process. I'm not going to stand here in front of you tonight and tell you that we have successfully cleaned up every single item that needs to be addressed. Remember that we did engage a new audit firm for this fiscal year, and so that we could get a new set of eyes, a fresh set of eyes, and help us correct those issues faster. And so we will be discussing that audit at the December board meeting, so I don't physically have a copy of that report yet, so I can't stand here and make you a promise that I don't know the answer to at this point, so...
I appreciate your candor on that. Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Lynn.
Thank you.
All right. We are moving now to action items. The first action item is considering the approval of Student Information System, or SIS, in enterprise resource planning, which aligns to Goal 1 and 4.
Thank you, President Fuller. I am really excited about the presentation that you are about to receive. If you remember, this year, one of the things that we started so that the board can have proper oversight over management is that we have various departments presenting to you, the work of their department, their alignment to the strategic plan, and most of all, for each department, the service and support that they're providing directly to our schools. I think all of us were incredibly impressed by, the first department out of the gate was technology, and Amanda and her team set a very high standard for all departments to follow, which I don't, we loved, but I'm sure her colleagues appreciated as much as we did. But during that presentation, she shared with you that one of the many, 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 many initiatives that Amanda has was the need for us to examine the technology systems that really support everything about our school district. There's very little about our school district today that is not impacted by technology, how we assess student performance, how we feed our students, how we pay our employees. Every aspect of our school district is touched by technology, and we want to make sure that the systems that we're utilizing are the best systems, the most effective and efficient. And Amanda shared that we were engaged in a process to review all of that, and that recommendations might be forthcoming tonight. Recommendations are here for your consideration, so Amanda, take it away.
Are you tired of seeing me yet?
No.
I'm hoping I get a break next month. All right. So tonight, part of our agenda, we're going to go through transparency, why is an SIS and ERP important, our process, the decision, and our recommendation. So starting with transparency, in September, when we did our department, our Technology Services Department update to you all, we discussed our need for adopting a new learning management system in our preparation to go one-to-one in year 2024. In order for those two systems, or for those two initiatives to work, we had to address our SIS and our ERP system first, so our student information system and our enterprise resource planning system. These two systems implemented now will hopefully lessen the growing pains that we will have when we ask our teachers to teach using technology here in the near future. So just as a reminder, these are our strategic plan, this is aligned with Goal 1, academic achievement, our department goal, and then our strategy was to bring a recommendation to you, which we're doing today, for our student information system, and then our enterprise resource planning system actually hits Goal 3 and 4 for our finance and operations and human capital, which aligns with both our strategic plan, our department goals, and then our strategies of bringing that to you to make sure that our systems work cohesively in the future. So what does an ERP and an SIS do? So if you kind of see these, as I was pointed out today during our SLT meeting, that these look like brains, so these are kind of the brains of our environment. Our enterprise resource planning system houses our financial management, human resources, this is how we pay our employees, this is how we track their time, this is how we know how much to budget for each campus in order to have subs, materials, understanding where our asset management comes in, when do we need to replace items, when do we need to look at repairs, how long are those repairs going to take. Also, this is where we can have our employees have customized forms, and so instead of having it on our website, we can have a central location for all of our employees to be able to get to forms that they are needing to access. Our SIS system still looks like a brain, handles all of our master scheduling for our campuses, handles our intervention data, so we can see a holistic view of the child, their behavior, their academics, their social-emotional learning. It handles all of our third-party integrations, so how our parents put money into our students' accounts to go get snacks at lunchtime, or how they connect to find what bus route their child is going to be on. That's what our SIS does for our parents. It also handles our online enrollment, which this year was a sore spot for many people, and for our admin, our sore spot has been discipline, because our current system does not allow them to save discipline referrals, so everything's on paper right now, or has been in the past couple of months. So these two systems have to work together, one to provide our enrollment numbers back to our ERP system, which allows us to budget, to plan for resources, facilities, and ensure that when a teacher applies to take off for a day, that there's a sub that's going to fill in, and where that's going to go back into our schedule, right? So this is an ever-revolving cycle, that information from our SIS feeds back into our ERP system, those numbers then allow us to plan for our schools. So you might be asking, why does MISD need a new SIS and ERP? I know this has been a topic that has been brought up in the past. They went so far as to even start the implementation of a new system for both SIS and ERP a few years ago, and at the last minute, stopped. So the issues that were then are still happening, and so these are just a few that have popped up in my research since I came onboard in May. Our biggest one is reliability, making sure that the system that we're using is going to work during our crucial times, making sure that our system is working during payroll, making sure our system is working when our grades need to be put in. It's also a system that we need to be able to access historical data, so if we need to go back in our finances for auditing reports, that we have the availability to do that. Another key feature of this is going to be reducing redundancy. Right now, we have multiple systems where either our admin staff or our teachers are having to put in information into multiple systems to get one outcome. So if it's in one system, they have to hand-key it into another, which causes human error. And so these are, again, just a few pieces of why we need to move forward. So during our evaluation process, again, I started hearing about this in May when I onboarded, so through conversation, through surveying, through just general, again, candid conversation, just listening, we surveyed each of our key stakeholders in both systems. We did vendor demonstrations that were customized to each stakeholder group. After that, we did a deep dive with all of our vendors to ensure that we understood their product roadmaps, so where they were going in the future, and whether or not we could be a part of their growth. Their support model, because right now, we receive amazing support from our region center on our products. And our integrations, so what can integrate? How does that information travel from one platform to a new... How does that information travel from one platform to another to make sure, again, that we don't have to hand-key things multiple times? After that, we did a kind of an apples-to-oranges-to-grapes comparison of the vendors and looked at their data analytics. So if I'm a teacher in the classroom, what kind of data can I see on my students? If I'm in HR, or if I'm in finance, what kind of data dashboards can I have that are right up my fingertips to give me decision-making power? We also looked at reporting. How can I customize reports? So if I need a list of all the kids that have birthdays for the month, am I going to get that? Or am I going to need a list of all the employees that need gap pay this month, right? So I can customize my reports based on my role. The other piece was interoperability. That means, again, how our systems talk to each other, what information is passed through the system, and then where can we alleviate having so many logins? Right now, our parents have a login to my school bucks, and they have a login to this, and they have a login to this. With a robust SIS system, they would have one login that would launch all of their logins. The other piece of that is going to be scalability. So as we grow, are we going to have the ability to customize the system the way that we need to? And the last piece is going to be mobility, because if you're like me and you are always on the go, having the ability to approve POs on your phone, or check our students' grades on our phone while I'm running from meeting to meeting is a big deal, and we do not have that ability right now. So looking at how our vendors stacked up, the first system is going to be our SIS system. These are just a few of the rubric pieces that we went through and checked for vendor 1, 2, and 3, and then you can see the cost at the bottom of what we are looking at as far as what it would be for our yearly. For our Enterprise Resource Planning System, same thing. There's a few of these that are hot topics, like our ease of use. We want to make sure that no matter what role you are in the district, that you have easy access to be able to get into that system. The other piece of that is going to be reliability. Is it going to be there when we need to run payroll? Is it going to be there when we have master scheduling going on? Is it going to be there when we're trying to do final grades? Is it going to be there when, you know, we need to onboard new people? So this is how did we decide? So through input from multiple stakeholder groups, again, this was conversations, this was surveying, this was listening during the demos of what worked and what didn't, what questions were they asking, how they phrase their questions in order to try to get the answer that they wanted to, right? So just kind of really paying attention to what our users, our end-users are wanting. We got input from pretty much every stakeholder group, I think, except for students, because, again, how many students actually check their grades besides their parents? We ended up asking some really big questions. So after all of those vendor demonstrations, after all that data, after all those comparing of the three systems, we started asking questions like, how is it going to talk to each other? What redundancies can we eliminate? How long is implementation going to take? What's the scheduled maintenance like? Because we don't want it to be scheduled during our biggest times of the year, right? How future-ready do we want to be? You know, do you want a system that we're comfortable with, and, you know, we have some growing pains with, or do we want a system that's going to allow us to scale? Another one that was a huge consideration for me was, what is the learning curve of our average user? Because if I'm asking them to learn two new systems, do they have the bandwidth to be able to do that? And then the last one was, again, what's best for Montgomery ISD? Because moving forward, even though it's something that I may absolutely love, and tell the superintendent, I really think that you should spend $500,000 on this, and it not be what's best for Montgomery, am I really doing what's right? So with all of those questions that we asked, Technology Services recommends Skyward for both our SIS and our ERP system. So implementation, before we get to that, implementation, if it gets voted on tonight, and it's an approved vote, our implementation will kick off December 1st with a kickoff meeting, and we will start forming our implementation committees. We will start doing data conversion, starting in February, in our key stakeholder groups, so finance, PMS, HR, some of our counselors, some of our registrars, our campus secretaries will start seeing training happening, starting in February through June, scheduled, of course, so that way they know what's coming. And then in July, a majority of our key stakeholders are going to get that training. So our transition hopefully will not impact our main demographic until July, when it's completely and fully impacted, or developed, sorry. What's the word I'm looking for? Implemented. There we go. So just to do a little cost comparison, our annual cost right now with Ascender is $126,000. Our implementation costs for Skyward, we're going to be using Esser funds at $514,000. There we go. And our future annual spend for the next five years with Skyward will be $118,000. Are there any questions?
So that's a savings.
Yes, ma'am.
Was this vendor too?
Yes, ma'am.
That looked like the best deal to me.
Ms. Davis-Summerville, could you maybe tell us, because I'm really intrigued now, what are some of the, maybe the top three things this is going to let us do now that we're not getting to do with Ascender? Please tell me my school bucks is one of them. We can just, okay.
So my school bucks will be integrated into the system. We can customize fields, so right now, we're having to print a lot of paper. Remember, we had print management last month. We're having to print a lot of paper for 504 documentation, RTI documentation. This will allow us to digitize a lot of that. In our board policy, we have in there that our parents have to sign for report cards. This allows us to not have to print those report cards, and our parents can digitally sign. On the finance side, the biggest piece, I think, is going to be the multi-entry for them and the historical data that they're going to get. And for me, it's going to be reliability, so that way, hopefully, we're not having these last-minute outages with our vendor, where we have concerns about not making payroll, or not being able to run report cards, or not being able to enter report cards on a heavy weekend that we know all teachers are up and entering report cards.
Let me word my next question to you a little thoughtfully. So I believe with our current provider, there's multiple layers of customer service if something goes wrong. You have to reach to someone who has to go reach to someone who has to talk to someone else. We're going straight to the source when something goes wrong with Skyward, right? We get to, like, call the Skyward people, and they help us?
We will have a team on the technology side that will be first line of defense for most of our campus questions. We get designated people, including all of our directors, all of our superintendents can immediately call Skyward, but we will have designated people that will be able to assist. And yes, it is a direct call to Skyward. We will have a project manager that is going to be with us through the entire school year next year. That's going to be our first line. We have customized professional development portal that if any questions arise, that's going to be the first place to go to. If you need to kind of figure it out on your own, or you would like to figure it out on your own, they're going to direct us to there. So it's going to be a multi-layered support system versus just calling to call to call. Yes.
The project manager will be here on staff with you guys for implementation?
Well, the project manager is with Skyward.
Right.
So we will have somebody in technology that will support the system in and out, do the training, everything that they are needing to do.
And if I can come back and just add a little bit more context with the customer service. Our previous system, Ascender, we contracted through Region Service Center 6, which we are one of the districts that belongs to that service center. But the actual program Ascender was operated through Region Center 20. I cannot compliment enough the customer service and the response that we were getting from a regional service center. There was no part of our decision that was dissatisfaction with that level of service, but they could only do what they could do. They didn't operate and manage the system, so they had to work with Region 20. So it's not only many of the issues around ease of use, single sign-on, interoperability that Amanda spoke to that are reasons why we're really excited about these new systems, but at the end of the day, the customer service from Region 6 was extraordinary. The challenges of having to go through multiple layers to get through Region 6 to Region 20 is really what was prompting some of this.
Thank you. Other questions?
You've mentioned reliability a couple times through there. How are we measuring reliability of a new system?
They will be hosting our data, so we went through, and it's ISOCore, I believe, is the company that is going to be hosting that. So we looked at all of their security measures, what we're going to have access to, what their timeline for product development looks like, when they're going to be rolling out new products, is it going to be quarterly, monthly, at WIM? You know, are we going to be hosted on a single server, combined server? Is our data going to be split over multiple data centers? So if one goes down, we have a backup at another data center. So those are kind of all the questions that I had, centered around reliability, to make sure that when something like that happened, a data center went down, we were not without what we needed.
And that's what was the problem with the old system, was that there was no redundancy in the backup?
Right. So right now, we're hosted at Region 6. We have our own server, but if power goes out there, then we don't have access to that. You know, if maintenance happens, even though we're on our own server, there are going to be maintenance windows. It's making sure that we understand when those maintenance windows happen and how to adjust.
So this combines SIS and ERP into one system?
Yes. They're going to be separate systems, right? You're going to have, so they're two separate systems, right? There's an employee access center, and then there's a teacher access center, but yes.
But it's all Skyward?
Yes.
Yeah. The implementation's an eight-month implementation. I feel like we've got the staff and the people, because I've done this ERP thing, and it's never, it's never fun.
Yeah. So what I've shared with a lot of you individually is, there's no part of this that will not have challenges. There will be hiccups, bumps, there will be some fumbling of the football, because just as you transition, you try to account for everything, but there will be situations that will arise, and we will meet them every time. What we've tried to do is think through a thoughtful implementation plan, looking at who is the high-touch users first, getting them trained, and then, like, really being thoughtful, and then really trying to be very protective of our teachers, because they've got a lot on their plate. We don't want them having to focus on the training needs going into next year until they've completed their academic challenges for this year. So one of the things that we've also tried to be thoughtful of is not only the implementation and the execution of this recommendation to you, but in February, we will be coming forward to ask you for voting on the academic calendar. And as we've been thinking ahead to that academic calendar, one of the process improvements that we want to have in that calendar for next year is to designate professional development days that will belong to the district, and then professional development days that will belong to the school, and then what are actual teacher workdays. And then Amanda and Dr. Weatherly have had the thumb wrestle to see who gets more of the district professional development days, which will be devoted more to technology, so it tells you whose thumb is better. But we just need to make sure that we honor and respect our employees enough to give them the time for the training that they're going to need. We want it to be as easy and as seamless as possible. There will be bumps, and we know that, but, you know, it's not going to be because we weren't diligent and thoughtful in the implementation of the systems.
I think I skipped a slide, and that's probably my fault. I was a little, you know, oh, yeah, I'm done. So yes, our teachers will not see a change until July, because our ERP system would go live July 1. They would have some training modules that they would have to either do before they leave in May, or in June before their contract rolls over in July, to be able to update their personnel information, W4s, you know, paychecks, whatever they need to have access to. They would have those training modules then, but for a majority of their training would be in July, and I believe that there is an option for a trade-out day in most of those academic calendars.
Other questions, ladies and gentlemen? All right. If there are no more questions, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Student Information System and Enterprise Resource Planning System as presented for Skyward.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Hammond, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that motion carries. Thank you, technology team.
Thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, next up on the action items is our vote for Montgomery Central Appraisal District Board of Directors election. Each taxing unit in the county gets to cast a number of votes. Montgomery has 294 votes for the Montgomery Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. This board has previously, in another meeting, nominated Mr. Adam Simmons, who is in attendance tonight. Welcome, Mr. Simmons. Ladies and gentlemen, or Dr. Morrison, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
I think we've nominated a quality individual, so let's get him voted on.
Board members, are there any questions about this casting of our votes? All right, there is some language that I have to follow, so I'm going to go ahead and make the motion, if you don't mind, ladies and gentlemen. If there, is there, I'm already screwing it up. I'd like to make the motion that Montgomery ISD casts its 294 votes for Montgomery Central Appraisal District Board of Directors for Mr. Adam Simmons for the 22-23 term. And with that, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Mr. Dennison has seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and abstained. Mr. Simmons, there's our votes. Please do.
Congratulations.
Continue to do the service. Thank you. That concludes our action items, ladies and gentlemen. We have some information items. Item 8A, update on district survey results, goals 1 and 5, 1 through 5.
Great time to bring up our anniversary, young man. Justin Moreno, Executive Director, Communications. To our board, we appreciate that several months ago, we asked for your vote to continue the engagement that we've really tried to demonstrate since you first hired me as superintendent. We're a public education system. We can never be satisfied that we've engaged enough. And so to constantly ask our public, our employees, our students, our community members, both those with children and those who don't have children, how our school district is doing, where we have strengths, where we could make thoughtful improvements is something that is continuous and unending. It never stops. In that endeavor, we wanted to take the opportunity to do, I think, the single largest survey of perception about our school district and the strengths we have and the areas to improve that we've ever taken, because we want to do it right, and everyone thinks they can create a survey and just get on Survey Monkey and ask a couple of questions. But a survey instrument is often tripped up by the quality of the questions that you ask. Ask the wrong questions, you're going to get the wrong information. Ask the questions in the appropriate way, and you'll get a false sense of the information that you're getting. So getting a quality vendor was incredibly important, not only to make sure that the instrument and the survey was done professionally and exceptionally well, but to make sure that our community, and especially our employees who sometimes have questioned previous experiences where surveys could trust that the results, whatever they may be, could be believed and trusted, and therefore, we would have data to start doing things we have pledged to do in the strategic plan. So Justin, please share with us who is going to be co-presenting with you, and take it away.
Good evening. I give, once again, thank you, Board of Trustees, for authorizing us to partner with K-12 Insight, who not only does this work with school districts across the great state of Texas, but across the nation as well. And with us tonight, we have the Head of Research, Dr. Jennifer Coysen, to give you a high-level overview of the results of the survey, which are currently posted on my favorite page of our website, Transparency. But before I bring her in, I want to thank the Montgomery community for their participation in this survey. Our rates were outstanding, as I'm sure Dr. Coysen will attest to. And I also want to thank them for, you know, putting up with all of our emails and text messages, reminding them to please take the survey, but it was very important, as now on the website, you will see under those 66 key performance indicators of our strategic plan, much of that data from the survey now populating on the website. So it's a great thing to see from that, from start to where we are now, to where where we'll go in the future on our pathway to premier. So, Dr. Coysen, we are ready for your presentation.
All right. First thing we have to do is just to remind you of the logistics of the survey and the project itself. This survey was sent to parents and guardians, campus-based staff, and students in grade 6 through 12 for feedback on school quality and the learning environment. In addition, the survey asked parents and guardians and all staff members for feedback on the district. We asked the district team members who helped develop the survey, and that addressed the following topics for parents, guardians, campus-based staff, and students, and those topics were academic support, student support, school leadership, family involvement, safety and behavior, and school operations. Additional questions were asked to parents and guardians and then all staff members about district bonds, communication and customer service, school board, district operations, likelihood of recommendation, and employee experience in the work environment. When we look at the details of the study, the parent and guardian and staff surveys were open from September 21st to October 5th, and the student survey was open the 21st of September to October 8th. Email invitations with unique survey links were sent to parents and guardians and staff. And throughout that survey window, we did send reminders to people who had not yet participated in the survey on September 24th and 29th, as well as October 3rd and 5th. For parents and guardians, there was also a public link that was posted on the district website, and parents and guardians could take the survey multiple times for each child that they had attending a district school. Students used their student IDs to access the survey in schools. The report that we're going to go through summarizes district-level overall survey results, and at times it will break it down and compare it to parents and guardians, campus-based staff, all staff where appropriate, and students in grade 6 through 12. Before we get into some of the finite details, we have an executive summary for you that just pulls out some of the high-level findings. Overall, 93% of parents rated their child's school as excellent or good. 88% of campus-based staff rated their school as excellent or good. And 75% of students in grade 6 through 12 rated their school as excellent or good. Participants gave some of the highest favorable responses, which we categorize as strongly agree or agree for items in the dimensions under academic support, student support, and safety and behavior. Some examples of that included 91% of parents and guardians and 82% of students said that their school has high learning standards for all students. 82% of students said that they're challenged by their schoolwork. 98% of campus-based staff and 86% of students said there's a staff member that students can go to for help with a school problem. And 97% of campus staff also said the same thing, that there's someone that students can go to for help with a personal problem. 90% of parents and guardians and 94% of campus-based staff said that their school is safe. And 96% of campus-based staff and 82% of students said that all staff members are aware of safety and security procedures. 84% of participating students said that their school offers a variety of extracurricular activities compared to 77% of participating parents and guardians and campus-based staff, who said the same. And then these last two bullets, we had 87% of participating parents or guardians and 86% of students who said that they were satisfied with the cleanliness of classrooms compared with 73% of campus-based staff members who said that they were satisfied. 92% of participating parents and guardians said that they were satisfied with the overall cleanliness of their student's school, whereas only 76% of participating campus-based staff and students said the same. Finally, when we look at the net promoter score, which is where we ask participants on a scale of 0 to 10, how likely they would be to recommend their school or their district to a family member or friend. Based on what their ranking is on that scale of 0 to 10, if they give a 0 to 6, they're classified as a detractor. If they're given a score of 7 or 8, they're classified as a passive. And for scores of 9 to 10, they're classified as promoters. From there, we're able to subtract the scores of promoters and detractors to get your net promoter score, which ranges anywhere from negative 100 to a positive 100, with positive scores being more favorable. So when we asked participating parents and guardians and campus-based staff members, they gave high scores for both the school and the district, and that highest score was a 57 from parents and guardians for the district. And you'll see as we get further into the presentation, I believe it's actually the last two slides, we'll break that down for you by participant group, and so you can kind of see all those different classifications. When we look at participation, you had a response rate of roughly 39% for parents, which is outstanding. Typically, we recommend a response rate of around 15% for parents. I think this is probably the highest participation rate that I've personally seen in the five years that I've been here, so that should definitely be applauded. You had 51% participation for staff, where we recommend a participation rate of 50%, so you're, you're right on target there. And for students, we had a 56% response rate. Typically, we like to see around 75% for students. However, given what we've seen just from the end of last year into this year, we've seen a decrease in our student participation, just because typically it's done virtually. And I think at this point, they're, they're kind of overwhelmed a little bit virtual, so we've been seeing our response rates more in the 50 to the 60 range. So you're pretty on par with that as well. So the next two slides we have are summarize your key performance indicators related to each of your goals. On this slide, you see we have goals 2, 3, and 4. And so you can see the key performance indicator and then the percentage that we have that corresponds to that. The percentage represents the strongly agree or agree responses for all items within that item that relates to that KPI. So for example, parents, guardians, staff members, and students are satisfied with the district police department. And you'll see that 96% of parents and guardians, 96% of staff, and 75% of students strongly agreed or agreed with that statement. And I know that you have all of this in front of you, and just for the sake of time and the length of the presentation, I won't go through each of these, but these are really strong favorable responses that you're looking at here. Next, we have the continuation of Goal 4 and Goal 5. And again, you can see here where there's a line that just means that that wasn't relevant. The asterisks represents for this item here on Goal 5, parents, guardians, and staff members report satisfaction with frequency and clarity in district communication. And that asterisk, as you can see at the bottom, represents that that's a combination of very satisfied and satisfied responses for those two items related to the frequency and clarity of your communication. And so you can see 93% of parents reported that they were satisfied or very satisfied, as well as 95% of staff. Next, we look at overall school quality. So we asked all participants, how would they rate the overall quality of their school or their student's school? You can see here, you've got 93% of parents are rating the school as excellent or good, 88% of staff, and again, then that's 75% of students. It was interesting to see, this is the first time I've ever seen, parents or guardians rating the quality of school as higher than campus-based staff. Typically, we see staff come in the highest, followed closely by parents, and then students typically lag behind in the 70s. I think this speaks to a lot of just kind of what's going on right now, just in terms of workloads and frustrations. Again, 88% is still a phenomenal percent that should be applauded, which is interesting to note that it is a little bit slightly lower than what we see for parents for your survey results, which is atypical. Next, we have the school quality dimensions. So these were the dimensions that were asked to campus-based staff only, parents and guardians, and then students. And you can see the breakdown, the percentage here represents the combination of strongly agree or agree responses for all items within that dimension. And then this is our cluster graph, so we can compare and see any gaps or alignments and perceptions within dimensions or individual items across the three different respondent groups. And this is where we see more of what we typically see with staff having the highest, parents coming in as a close second, and students kind of lagging behind here. Again, you see these, these lag ranges here. This is consistent with what we see. You know, students are always within these different kind of 60 to 80 percentiles for these types of questions. So next, we go through and we'll see on the academic support. So these graphs are set up the same way with the cluster graphs, the percentages representing strongly agree or agree. What's different here is for these items that had a large percentage of a don't-know response of greater than 10%, we went ahead and called that out. That can be important to know. Sometimes it's interesting to see different items that have large percentages of don't-know. A lot of times, we equate that, that there's an opportunity there to kind of communicate out, maybe some great things that are happening in the district or its schools. You can see here again, schools' learning standards and expectations are clearly explained to students, so a little bit of gap in perception here. I will say, this is typically a little bit lower than what we see historically compared to school quality surveys that we've done. You know, last year, we didn't do a lot of school quality surveys just because a lot of districts wanted to hold off, and this is really the first year that we've kind of kicked back off into doing them. And so a lot of these can kind of just be attributed to what's happening right now and in different environments and different ways in which students are learning. Again, this is interesting to see that 12% of students said that they don't know if teachers give timely feedback about student work. So that could be an opportunity there to look at different school-level reports and see maybe where some of those higher percentages of don't-know were coming in. And then rounding out academic support, here we have this item here, students successfully show students how lessons relate to life outside of school. This is always one of the lowest ones that come across. It's been consistent pre and post-pandemic, both in Texas and just across the country. This is one of the lowest items that receive the lowest percentages of favorable responses, especially for students and parents. And as you can see, we've got the higher percentages of don't-know here from parents. So possible opportunity there to communicate out more of what students are doing in the Next, advanced courses. School increases the number of students enrolled in AP and dual-credit courses. Again, high percentages of don't-know here, especially from parents. Next, we have student support. These are the items where we saw high percentages of favorable responses related to having someone to go to for a school problem, but we can see that that decreases a little bit when students want somebody to go to for a personal problem. And that's consistent with districts that we see, there's always higher favorable responses related to school problems versus personal problems. This item that also is typically pretty low and consistent with what we see is again, receiving support that addresses individual student needs. When we look at school leadership, this is the dimension that always comes across with the lowest percentages of favorable responses from students. And this is where we just ask how they feel about student administrators in terms of making good decisions, clearly communicating, being available, being courteous, being responsive. It's good to see higher percentages from staff as well as parents, especially given today's Family involvement, here we also get a lot of lower percentages from students, and we see an increase in don't-know responses. But this is where we just talk about students being informed and encouraged to participate. It's good to see some higher favorable responses. This is one that we've seen some lower favorable responses come through this year, just given everything. I know I'm still not allowed to participate in things at my son's school, so it's nice to see good percentages of favorable responses here. Other percentages of favorable responses seen here for mutual respect, staff members and families. This item here, the score respects and values input provided by families, 75% from parents is typically higher than what we see. Usually, we see anywhere to the mid to upper 60s. So even though that seems a little bit lower compared to what some of the other items are or other dimensions, that's still strong favorable response compared to what we historically Next, we talk about safety and behavior. So here we have the items related to this school as being safe, awareness of safety and security procedures. This is where we see staff and students treating each other with respect. This item of discipline being enforced fairly, this is one that we consistently see is pretty low for parents and students. It's interesting to see the lower percentage of 73 coming from campus-based staff. Typically, from staff, we see that more in the upper 70s kind of to mid-80 range. So that could definitely be one when we look at the site reports and break it down by school to kind of unearth that and see if there's anything going on at school sites. Other questions within safety and behavior, students treating each other with respect, some items related to being responsive to bullying and bullying not being tolerated. Again, we see some lower percentages of favorable responses, keeping in mind that we're also seeing higher percentages of don't-know responses. This is unfair treatment. So for this item here, students in school are treated fairly regardless of their background. If someone selected that they disagree or strongly disagree, they're then prompted to this question, which is multi-select, so percentages will exceed 100%. And they're asked to select any of these items that they feel that they witnessed students being treated unfairly. And so kind of in line with what we typically see, race ethnicity is usually number one, and we've seen sexual orientation being a close second. Satisfaction with the police department. Interesting for me to see 75% were very satisfied or satisfied. This isn't one that we ask a lot on different surveys, but anytime I have asked it, you know, I typically see a lot lower favorability, especially coming from students related to the police presence on campus or just any interactions that they've had with officers on campus. The next three slides pull out the highest, five highest-ranking items and five lowest-ranking items for each of the participant groups. So you can see some here related to academic support, so three of five of the highest items are related to academic support. And then when we look at some of the lower items, these items here are related to helpful and timely feedback, also came from academic support, pretty in line with what we see, especially just kind of in today's educational environment. When we look at campus-based staff, we'll see student support and safety and behavior make up the majority of what we see here for highest-ranking survey items. The variety of academic courses, so some academic support questions and extracurricular activities for some of the lowest percentages of favorable responses. And just to note out, the percentage here that you see is the percentage of strongly agree or agree. The percentages you see here are the percentage of strongly disagree or disagree. And then lastly, for students, it's good to see academic support, student support coming through with, you know, four of the five highest-ranking items. And then looking at some safety and behavior related to discipline and staff-students retreating each other with respect, so some higher percentages of strongly disagree there. And again, this one here, successfully showing students how lessons relate to life outside of school, that's consistent with what we see and just in terms of what students are wanting and understanding how to apply what they're learning in class into the real world. I mean, I think I was in my early 30s before I finally realized that I actually do use algebra on a more frequent basis than I ever thought I would when I was in high school. Next, we have school cleanliness. So this is just how satisfied or dissatisfied are you with these different aspects, the school grounds... classrooms, cafeteria, bathrooms, overall cleanliness? And so percentages of very satisfied or satisfied. Interesting, I, you know, I would accept some parents to be higher here. I think, you know, staff and students are the ones that are there every day, so they really know more so than parents. Next, the satisfaction with school meals. So these, this slide represents the responses from parents and students. 75% of parents are very satisfied or satisfied. Of course, students, much lower percentages of satisfaction. I think that that's something that's been consistent across the ages. Next, we ask satisfaction with child nutrition department. So this is for campus-based staff. And this question is phrased a little bit differently than the one that went to parents and students. But you can see overall high percentages of favorability of satisfaction with campus-based staff's interaction with the child nutrition department. Next, the satisfaction with technology. So being satisfied with the technology at their school or their child's school. Again, we see parents and guardians and students. It's good to see 75% of students came back as very satisfied or satisfied. Again, anytime I've asked this question, I typically see lower than the 60% for satisfaction from students on these. School technology. So these questions went to campus-based staff. And this is where we ask them about their interactions with school technology in terms of having appropriate access, being encouraged to integrate technology, as well as the school overall preparing students for success in post-secondary education. Next, we look at transportation. You'll see these are the questions that were asked to parents and students. And just to point out, the items here are phrased in terms of what was on the parent survey, but they were phrased appropriately when put on the student survey. So more of, I feel safe when riding the school bus. But again, good, strong percentages is a favorability here. We asked parents and guardians for overall satisfaction related to the transportation department. I would say pretty strong percentages here are coming through with 38% very satisfied and 49% satisfied. You know, especially with everything going on right now. I know even just within my area, favorability would be a lot lower. So this is definitely something to applaud. Next are the district questions. These questions went to parents and guardians, and then these questions went to all staff members, not just campus-based staff. So overall, we asked about satisfaction with communication. Strong percentages here in the 90s. You know, typically, we see anywhere from mid 80s to mid 90s. So these are some great percentages. I'll say a little bit higher on the staff side. Typically, staff will come in kind of in the upper 80s, lower 90s because they feel like they're either communicated too much or not enough. So definitely doing really great work in the communication department. Communication and customer service. This is where we're looking at communicating well with families. Information shared is clear and easy to understand, being transparent, building trust. We see some lower favorability here for some of these items, keeping in mind, don't know, high percentage of 14%. And some large percentages of don't know here are 15 and 13. So that definitely impacts your favorable responses that you're seeing. Some more communication and customer service questions here. Again, an item here with some larger percentages of don't know response. When we look at satisfaction with customer service, overall, how satisfied or dissatisfactory are you with the quality of customer service provided by the district? 91% came through as very satisfied or satisfied with parents. And then looking at 89% of satisfaction from staff. So good, strong favorability there. Some more customer service and communication questions. Providing opportunities to give feedback as well as input on the decisions is valued. These questions were asked only to staff members. So some opportunity here in terms of kind of looking out and communicating to staff, closing the loop on how not only that you're, you know, for an example with this survey, how you're asking for their input, but really closing the loop, letting them know not only what you found, but how you're going to use that to make improvements. And then, you know, do another round of, you know, a survey to say, the first survey, we heard this from you. This is what we got. We made these changes. We did another survey, and we heard this from you. And this is how our changes either improved or did not improve what we heard from you and where we needed to make effort. The next set of questions related to bonds. Again, these went to parents and guardians. And this is their degree of support for these different following statements related to considering pursuing a bond for purposes of constructing and expanding school facilities, pursuing a bond to provide us to career and technical education and fine arts opportunities, and pursuing a bond to address existing capital and infrastructure improvement needs. So certainly some opportunity here. If you look forward to go into a bond, to really work to communicate out kind of the why behind the different measures that you're including in your bond. Again, some more bond questions. Pursuing a bond to address athletic improvements, a bond to address technology infrastructure, and then a bond that includes pursuing transportation needs. So again, being really strategic should you have a bond moving forward to communicate out the purpose behind the different measures prior to the bond going up for vote. Next, discuss finances and operations. Here, we see a high percentages of don't know responses, especially from parents. So opportunity here to kind of communicate out and be transparent surrounding some of these pieces within the district. And we look at satisfaction with the different district departments. Here, we've got overall satisfaction of very satisfied or satisfied, child nutrition, communication, curriculum instruction, finance, and human resources. There was no don't know response here, just not applicable, and those responses have been excluded. Then continuing with district departments, maintenance, the police department, specialized learning, technology, transportation. We asked questions about the board of education. Again, really high percentages here of don't know. So that's going to impact what we see in terms of favorable responses. Board members making decisions consistent with mission and vision, making decisions in the best interest of students, and working cohesively as a team. So a lot of opportunity here to kind of communicate out the purpose and intention and decisions behind the board and what's going on there, just to improve some of those don't knows. We look at the district leadership and superintendent. Again, consistent with what we've seen with some of these higher-level administrator questions, high percentages of don't know responses, especially from parents. Effectively supporting campuses to meeting the needs of students, consistent with goals, mission, and vision of the district, as well as being responsive with suggestions or concerns. But here, where we have lower percentages of don't know, you do see higher percentages of favorable responses, especially from staff. Next, we have health and safety measures. So we did ask them to agree or strongly disagree that the district had implemented the necessary health and safety measures in response to COVID. This was asked to parents and guardians, all staff members, and students. You see some higher percentages of favorable responses here from parents and staff, and slightly lower on the side of students. I think some of that could just be contributed to different policies related to PPE, depending upon how that works within your district. We asked about the mask policy. How strongly did they disagree or agree with the decision to make masks or face coverings optional? And again, we see some strong percentages of favorable responses here from parents and staff. Interesting to note that students had some slightly lower percentages of favorable responses for that item. Next, we asked all staff members about their overall employee experience. This is where we asked if they're proud to work for the district, feelings of accomplishment. We see some lower percentages of favorable responses related to professional development opportunities and PD and training, how it meets the requirements of current jobs. These questions come from our employee engagement survey that we do. And I can say that this is consistent with what we see. Specifically, these two items and items related to PD and career growth and training, along with feedback and recognition, are always the lowest ones that we see that come through from our employee engagement survey. So pretty consistent with what I typically see. Again, some more opportunity. And here, we have the long-term growth, retaining high-quality teachers and competitive salaries. This item here related to salary and benefits. Again, that's always going to have lower favorable responses, at least in the surveys that I've done. And we asked about the work environment. Here, we see some good, strong favorable responses, especially in terms of having positive work culture, having supportive colleagues, you know, as well as just general overall feelings of liking the culture within their school or department. And here, we have more questions for the work environment related to having a positive work environment from colleagues, atmospheres of mutual respect. Again, kind of what I referenced a little bit earlier, we see these lower favorable responses for this this item related to being recognized for good performance. So certainly always beneficial to kind of relook at and see if anything needs to be revamped for any district-wide or site-level recognition and appreciation programs. When we look at the district department experience, the feeling that their department is efficient, runs smoothly, meets the needs of the district. So good, stronger percentages here within the mid 70 ranges. This would definitely be one that could be helpful to look at at the department level. These were answered by non-campus-based staff members. Our last two slides are those net promoter slides. So this is where you'll see anyone who rates as a nine to 10 is classified as a promoter. Anyone who is a passive is classified in the seven to eight. And detractors are anywhere from zero to six. And in order to get an NPS, you subtract the percentage of detractors from the percentage of promoters. Parents and guardians at the school level, a 54 and a 51 for campus-based staff. These are probably some of the highest NPS scores that I've seen, especially as of late. So this should definitely be something that you're proud of. And the same to be said at the district level. From parents, you're looking at a 57. And from staff, you're looking at a 48. So again, higher than what I typically see. So you should certainly be proud of that. And that concludes the presentation. I know it was wrong. I know that there was a lot of information. If there are any questions, I'm happy to try to answer any questions for any of you.
Board members, any questions? There is a lot to dig into here. And I want to thank Dr. Koison for her time. And we will likely be in touch as we develop a plan for what we're going to do next.
Well, I think, Dr. Fuller, what is important is the data is interesting, but it's what you do with the data that is really important. The data was critically important first to populate our strategic plan KPIs. And so as Justin indicated, you get on our website right now, you can start to see where we have populated those KPIs that needed survey input. So perceptions of staff around work environment, perception of staff and students and parents around safety of schools. So all those things start to get populated. And we're starting to set those targets over the next several years. What staff is also doing is to look through the strategies under each goal to say, okay, if the results came in high, which many of these areas did, we're excited about that. Do we have the right strategy in place to keep those results high in the future? And if there are any areas where we feel that the results were not as robust or positive as we'd hoped they would be, then again, do we have strategies in place to correct those things? And then I also think it's just important because there was a lot of data that weren't necessarily part of our strategic plan. So we've shared the campus-level data with the principals. Those will also be populated on the school portions of the website at the same time as this has been made available on our website. Campus administrators, where we have the same level of conversations with their staff, with their students, with their, with their parents. Dr. Fuller sat in on some of the conversations we had. We shared these results with my student advisory groups at Lake Creek High School and Montgomery High School. Our students had a lot to say. They celebrated the areas where the positive results were things around safety, overall perception of the school. But then we had some great conversations about things like, what's the real-world application to what I'm learning? And they had a lot to say about that and a lot that we can start to share with with our staff. And those conversations will happen on each campus as well. And then finally, I think what's just important with all of these data is to remember that we will be coming back out and doing this in the spring. And so when we come back out, we're certainly want to see those results that are exceptionally strong continue to be strong, areas that we know. What was interesting, as you look at these results, most school districts would just be thrilled, stop right now. But there were a lot of these areas that were either very positive or positive with very little negative, but many areas don't know. So for example, there were areas around board activity, superintendent, district-level activity that there's a don't know. So that gives us an opportunity to really reach out and make sure that the public understands what we're doing, why we're doing it, and holding us accountable for that. So I'm excited. I want to thank Justin and team for leading this whole process. And again, we'll be doing it in the spring, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, yes, ma'am. All right. Are there any questions on the monthly financial report? All right, ladies and gentlemen, in that case, I would like to adjourn this meeting.